...agenda this evening, two items only in our open session. So I will go ahead and first invite Susan Phillips to come forward, Director of Neighborhood Services, to join us for a conversation on over occupancy issues in our neighborhoods.
Good afternoon.
Susan, we got an easel for you coming.
I think it's...
Is our representative here from Delmarva Collections?
I'm here from the finance department.
Okay. Would we consider putting that one out of the way? Because that's a slam dunk real quick and there's no presentation really involved with it.
I'm fine with that. Susan, do you mind?
Would you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Phillips, that's a great idea. Let's do it. You can go ahead and set that up if you want. I don't think it'll obstruct anything.
That's the way they go, Tom. I know it doesn't look like it, but that's the way.
It's gotta be even.
Yeah.
I will not be able to talk this...
Absolutely. Great idea.
I'm Tracy. I'm from the finance department.
Welcome, Tracy.
We're on Keith's behalf. And the resolution that is before you is for the city that's been working with the city's legal team to collect delinquent accounts. And they have advised us for this more balance issue using a more economical way, which would be Delmarva Corrections.
Mr. Tillman, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this? I know this is, the collections process is something that we've discussed and its impact on your agenda. Would this assist in reducing your, a burden on your time?
This isn't, I think there might be almost more of a savings in the finance office than ours. We currently bill about 3% of the total collected as being spent with us. So there's a very, very low rate that you're paying for the attorney portion of this. This rate of, what is it, 25 or 30% would have some justification in the smaller cases where it's saving staff time. There's really no justification from a legal point of view. You know, whatever they send us overall is just, you know, we bill by the hour. So if somebody owes $10,000 and we write one letter, it costs you $30 to collect $10,000. And, you know, there's no windfall for us when you get a big one or anything like that. So, but again, I think this is more of an internal decision that's being made, you know, by the finance office.
Mr. Teller, is there, is there a reason that this service isn't being bid out or isn't being put out for bid?
We just recently also came before council and requested that for our property tax, delinquents. So it's, we're kind of going on the same line and using Delmarva Collections.
Okay.
We have a working relationship with them, you know, with the property tax already.
Just an expansion of the services they're going to be providing the department?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Other questions?
This is, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mitchell.
I thought this was for the property tax. We were using them for the ambulance calls, correct? Already. And then this is for the property?
No, not for, not for the ambulance calls. The current service that we have for our billing for ambulance calls, they are doing those collections.
They're doing collections as well. What was the other thing that we were? This is just a renewal. We approved this before for property tax.
No. This is, this is more for like miscellaneous accounts receivable billings, which would be false alarm billing.
Water veils and arrears or something like that?
Not, not any water and sewer.
Okay.
But a lot of miscellaneous ARs. We have a lot outstanding for police false alarms, fire false alarms, grass cuts, bulk trash, stuff like that.
How will that affect turning them into a lien if they're unpaid? Or will it? Because when, and my understanding is when you assign them to a collection agency, you're assigning the entire thing. They give you a portion of it and whatever they can collect, they collect. So we relinquish that. So then we, do we lose our recourse to make that a lien?
We would have to give the pay, the credit, I mean, the payer full credit for whatever they paid. So it would ultimately, you know, increase your cost as far as, it may not increase your cost with, versus staff time. That's what I'm trying to say. But you're, you're, you're going to receive less in taxes because of a contingency fee agreement with a collection agency. That's a fact. Once the person has paid, we can't have a lien for what's been paid.
Right. But I'm saying if they, if it's sent to a collection agency and they do everything that they can and it's still not collectible, if we've made that effort, we would convert it to a lien. Is that correct?
Yeah. When, where we have a lien, we don't lose our lien unless the person actually makes payment. So when they're in default and we file the, you know, papers necessary to create a lien, we have a lien.
So we would lien it before it goes to the law collections?
That would be my recommendation. I mean, unless it's such a small amount that it's not worth that effort.
These are all, I should clarify. These are all smaller amounts. I mean, it's not like our $20 property taxes, the ones that you've, that you've been pursuing for us. This is much smaller balances.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it just, I mean, Delmarva Collections may be doing the job that your office has done and it may be the best use of time and resources. But I just, I don't have any way to comment or judge that from their point of view.
Well, I don't want to see that we put a lien on somebody's property for $50.
No. No. But I...
No. I mean, if it's...
Trying to...
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want to see us going in, because that's, you know, and I think you're going to put them also in the credit bureau if they don't pay.
Well, that's what that does. That's what this does.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. So that should motivate somebody. But I just don't want to see us putting a whole lot, hundreds of people for small amounts, like you said, small amounts of money to lien a property. And, you know, because it's similar to the email we had, about $100 and if this person used their property for $100, I don't want to see that happen.
That's actually a good question. Do we know what amount you guys are letting it get up to before you file a lien?
That's, we, Keith and I are compiling, currently compiling all that information before we, you know, forward anything to Delmarva Collections. So, you know, we'll look at all that.
Because that's what I was thinking. It could start out small, but like grass cutting, for instance, it could be one or two bills. But if they don't, if they continue to not cut and we continue to bill and they continue to not pay, it could add up to a substantial amount.
Right. And we could wait and do that.
If we've sent in increments and then all of a sudden it's thousands of dollars that we have in them, and what happens to our lien claims, that was my concern or question, I guess, was seeing.
We don't actually collect the lien unless someone comes in to transfer the real estate or something like that happens. That's what normally happens.
Right. But if we've already sent it to Delmarva Collections several, let's say $150 charges at a time, and before we know it, it's up to, you know, a couple of summers, it's up to $10,000 or something. We've assigned it to them to collect. If they're still not collecting and yet the property transfers, how are we going to know that there's still this outstanding debt that's been assigned to them and didn't get a lien?
They need to communicate and let the city know if they're not collecting it so that we can then pursue a lien. They, they need to let us know that.
There will be periodic reports. Won't there be on what the...
There will be good aging reports.
Okay. Well, I see this as it, this takes an amazing amount of clutter from your office, which is, you know, and a lot of man hours that could be better spent elsewhere.
I mean, the other thing that's, that I assume from this is that, you know, there's no request for funding to establish this contractor or to, to pay them. So the, the funding would be coming from...
The proceeds.
The proceeds.
Correct.
So presumably this isn't costing the city anything, you know, other than some portion of funds that might otherwise not be collected.
They, it's 25% their charge and then it would go to 30%. They have legal to date. So if they involve, they're legal, then it goes to 30%.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Makes a lot of sense to me. All right. Is there a council consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you.
Welcome back, if you would.
It's crooked.
After all of, all that work.
What's going on?
I could not imagine. Married to a brother. Crazy.
Well done.
Now it's crooked.
Now it's really crooked.
It's crooked earth.
You should never have it alone.
Crooked earth.
Get my pictures.
Looks good.
Yes.
Yeah. I can live with that. Thank you.
Oh, Jesus. It's straight. The streets are crooked.
That too.
Okay.
Just over your shoulder and out of the way of the camera. There you go.
Is that, is that funny? Bring it back. Just for the record, I really like protection. It's much easier to see. That's okay.
Good enough for now.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The question that I'm proposing...
Susan, do you need a microphone?
I do. I'm sorry. I have one. I'm just not speaking into it. I'm sorry. Is strengthening the chapter we have on occupancy. Since 2010, I have some stats showing the issue, the complaints that we've gotten as far as occupancy. I've personally dealt with the occupancy complaints over the years. So I have firsthand experience with them. Since 2010, we had 10 over occupancy cases throughout the city.
Complaints or citations?
Complaints that turned into valid occupancy, over occupancy cases. 2011, we had eight. 2012, we had 20. 2013, we had 25. And two, two, I'm sorry, 2013, we had 25. 2014, we had 44. Just so far in 2014, we had 44. And we're only in, we just, just came into November. And the majority of the occupancy complaints are college rentals starting, you know, this is all starting since the end of August. And they are all predominantly in this area here, this map that I've shown you. All the red dots, the red squares are all the over occupancy cases that we have right now. So that's why I made this map to show you over this span. So it's really an issue. So far, throughout the years, starting in 2010, we've been able to handle the situation. The past few years, as you'll see, it's been growing. This year, we've been unable to handle it. This year, once we get the issue, we identify it, we investigate it, we find out that it is over occupied, we issue the order to reduce, and at the same time, we're issuing citations. Municipal infractions amount $500. So that is the strongest teeth that we have at this point to battle this issue. So that's why this legislation is here now, because we're asking for something tougher so we can handle this. Because it's just, it's a fire that's just spreading and we need something stronger. This legislation here is asking for two things. The first thing that we're asking for is to pull registration for that particular rental, suspend, revoke, or deny a rental registration for that particular rental, not the, not the person's license, just the registration for that particular structure or unit. The second thing is when a particular unit has had approval for either three unrelated or four unrelated, back in 2006, when structures were approved to have more than the occupancy limit, limits were for that particular zoning district, there, there's a handful of properties that are allowed to have three and allowed to have four unrelated. If those houses, those property owners that are on those two lists that, that are in, that violate that occupancy limitations in that area, they lose. If they are found in violation, they automatically lose that privilege to have three or four. I have found a few so far that have done that and they have lost that right. So what this does is that the improvement we have made to 1524-280E strengthens that wording just to make that stronger. And then you will see in 1640, that backs that up. And then in 1526-110, that is talking to the denial, non-renewal, revocation, or suspension of license or registration. And we are speaking, we are speaking to the registration.
Susan, can you speak to the, two things, to the students that live there? Do they know they're over occupied? And two, do they have a copy of their tenant's bill of rights that council passed that is supposed to tell them how many people are allowed to live in each house? Because again, I don't want us to have to get in the middle of the relationship between landlord and tenant. And we have tried to stay out of that. But I am, I'm, I'm saying that the council has taken some very, very proactive steps here in the last couple of years to empower anyone who rents to know how many people live there. Are you seeing the tenant's bill of rights? Are they talking about that? Are they saying anything to you when you've got to go that says one way or another, they knew, they didn't know?
We actually are saying, signing tenant's bill of rights.
And the house is still over occupied?
Yes. We're asking for them. They're producing them.
So if the tenant knows and the tenant's doing it, then we're...
I've seen, I've seen...
I'm not sure we're penalizing the right person.
A lot of different scenarios. I've seen almost every scenario that you could possibly, each one of you could come up with a different scenario right now and I've seen it. I'll, I'll leave all the little details, you know, to myself.
Shift housing.
I've seen everything. I've had to call parents and tell them situations that they're not happy to hear. I've seen it where the landlords have intentionally over occupied to try to deceive the city. I've seen it where the landlords are trying to do everything that they should be doing to do right by the city and not over occupy, but the tenants have done it and the landlords did, had, were doing everything right. It wasn't the landlord's fault. And the tenants just had a friend come in and, you know, the landlord had no clue. I've seen so many different things. I've seen where the tenant said that their person's not living there, they only stay here six nights a week. That sort of thing. So I've seen so many different things.
So Susan, let, I mean, from, from the situation, the dramatic uptick that we've seen, I think in, regardless of who is driving the violation, whether it's the tenant by deceiving the landlord or the landlord by trying to deceive the city, it seems to me that ensuring that compliance occurs from that point forward, from the point of discovery and confirmation forward, is completely logical. We would want to make sure that immediately the, the dwelling meets occupancy. And, and I can also see there being some measure of punishment, like the requirement that the landlord gives up their license on that property for either some period of time or permanently. The, the one question I have right now, the one thing that lingers for me and I haven't quite sorted out, is the reduction in the ability to continue to exceed the original occupancy level and due to whatever historic reason led to that, so whether it's three or four unrelated, I mean, that seems to me a little bit punitive. I'm not sure I understand the driving purpose, other than to create a change in the neighborhood in general. And that's, that doesn't sound like a bad thing to me, but it, it does seem a little bit punitive. Can you speak to why that might be a necessary part of this, this change in policy?
That is actually something that's already in the code.
Okay.
We, that was created when the four to two legislation was created.
So this is the amendment to, or this is the change to 1524-280E? Is that, okay.
Yes. And the, the changes to that section is only strengthening it. It's just rewording it a little bit, making, making the words a little stronger. It's, we're just, as you read on, it's just taking out two unrelated persons, not including the children, and just putting in the maximum occupancy.
Which is two unrelated persons.
It's just rewording it.
I might be able to clarify that too, Mr. President.
Mr. Tillman.
I participated in that. Originally, you, you had the one section that said it reduced to two and another section that said it reduced in compliance with the code. And what that meant was that you, under the code, a conforming use in this, in those districts where two was permitted, had, was only two. They allow occupancy by three and four as a non-conforming use. So rather than argue about whether you're going from four to two or three to two or whatever, we basically said that instead of saying two and instead of saying the code, we use the same language in both sections, which was you lose that non-conforming status that you previously had, which has the result in a four to two district of making it two, which is what one section of the code already said.
Okay.
And we, we were just trying to really keep those two sections consistent with one another language wise, but that's in effect what it was intended to do.
Okay.
And this would all be, I mean, if somebody had a violation, it would be appealable to the Board of Housing, the adjustments and review or whatever.
So I'm trying to get clarity then on, since that was just a change in the, the wording, because the code effectively allowed that before. Trying to get a handle on the effective changes.
The, the effective change would be, the one that's, that's the change from what it previously was would be 1526-110. That would be a substantive change that in addition to a violation of the licensing and registration standards, you add to that violation of licensing and regu, regu, excuse me, and registration and a violation of the occupancy. So in other words, this for the first time...
So just, Keith raised it on line 71.
Yes. And they're, for the first time, they're now tying the license to the occupancy violation as well as that, that's the substantive change.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
And Mr. Council President, there isn't anything, and we may be looking for some guidance from council in terms of how long the housing official can keep the, the, the ability to rent it. I would imagine that a monetary value could be put on the work that the housing inspector, that the housing officer, that the police, that the city administrator, having, having worked through Towngown, having worked through, through, what's the other one?
Neighborhood Compact.
Neighborhood Compact and all the rest of them. The, you know, your time on the phone with neighbors, my time on the phone with neighbors, I think we would probably get some guidance from you or maybe from legal as to what, what would be the appropriate amount of time. But the amount of energy and the amount of resources that has had to go into just that and not even really up at the northern side here of Camden, but the southern end where you see all of the red, the amount of resources that have gone into that area since school started. And we have been right at the table with the university. We've been right at the table with all of the, all of the players. But 44 said to Mrs. Phillips that we're approaching that point where it, it does seem as if whomever it is, and I, I can't deline, I can't differentiate between who owns it and who is living there because the call doesn't come from either of those two people, it comes from the people who live on either side, that we've reached a critical point here where we have to really make it clear that we get you to register, we get you to register when it's non-conforming, we get you to do all these things, but that doesn't seem to have stopped the flow of somebody's not paying attention to the law.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it. And I mean, you can see that if there are 44 over occupancy violations in the city, there are 39 of them just in this neighborhood. And, you know, personally, seven of them are on my block. That's astonishing to me. And so, okay, I, I don't know if this is what you were hinting at, Mayor, but the idea of a monetary value being placed on it, I don't, I don't know if you were getting toward a fine or a fee, but to me...
But just for how long to, if, if you were going to allow the housing official to take, to take the license, how long you want to do that for?
To, to me, refusal to renew, that could, it's annual, right? So I mean, that could be each, that could be each year. Revocation is permanent suspension. That's the one question is, to me, a fee or a fine in this case would probably, just knowing the potential value of rentals, it would have to be a very, very high fine. And when fines have to have a relationship to actual costs, the fine's not going to mean anything. It's not going to change the behavior.
The fee has to have a relationship. The fine doesn't.
Fine doesn't at all?
Not fee does. The fine does.
The fee does. Right. And, and actually what Susan, what Neighborhood Services is doing now, when we started to see an uptick in the number of reported over occupancy cases, we started issuing citations, as she mentioned earlier in there, in the amount of $500. So they are, they are intended to be punitive. And what we had done in the past was identified the violation, asked for compliance, got the unit into compliance, but apparently that's not taking care of the problem. So we were issuing the citations and now we need to strengthen the legislation as well to say that there's a risk of suspension or potentially revocation of your unit registration on that unit if you can't keep it into compliance, whether or not it's the tenants or the landlords. The landlords have a responsibility too, to make sure that they're keeping those units in compliance. And, and if you're going to lose your non-conformity, that's an even greater incentive to police it and make sure that it's not, not in violation.
I, I could be wrong, but when I think about the, the process of, of registering a rental and then the typical one year of a rental term, I would think that one year would be the logical time period for a suspension because refusal to renew is likely going to impact greater than a year. So the, the period to a renewal, within the current year, up to the renewal plus the following year during which time the registration is not renewed, a revocation again would be permanent. So the suspension to me would be the logical time period that if you're going to go less than the time for non-renewal would be a year.
See, the problem with that that I, I'm thinking of is that, or the scenario that I'm thinking of, let's say you have a multifamily dwelling, you have one unit in there that's over occupied and you don't renew the license for that one. If it's, like I said, multifamily would only apply to that unit.
Sure. Let's, let's...
But in, in another scenario, maybe they have other legal, non-conforming issues. If it sits vacant for a year, they're going to lose all of those, not just this. The way this reads is any non-conformity is, unless I'm misreading it, it says you lose all of your non-conforming uses if you're suspended or you violate this. Because after a year it's gone. Not just related to the over occupancy, but everything. It could be a setback. It could be...
No.
No, it's only, yeah.
It says the number of unrelated occupants shall be permanently reduced to the maximum allowed for the applicable conforming use. So it's just an occupancy.
I'm reading 110. 1526-110.
Where, where in 1526-110?
Just the, the gist of the, the opening paragraph, beginning of the...
That's an existing paragraph. So what, what specifically about the changes?
It's only the underlined portion that's being changed.
The red underlined.
Right.
Which just says the occupancy provisions of this code. In the meantime, let me ask you this, Susan. Just so we're aware, are there any, are there any multifamily dwellings that have been determined to be over occupied?
No.
That is correct.
Not this year.
It's all, all single family this year?
No.
And another question too. Over those four years that you've talked about, how many of these properties are, are really repeat offenders?
The one, Drew Hill are repeat offenders.
I'm sorry?
The one, Drew Hill are repeat offenders.
Yes. Okay. And I thought I saw one on Pennsylvania Avenue that sort of pops up every, don't say so. Yeah.
Yes.
That's the one. Okay.
I have a question. Because you know I'm not interested in that, this occupancy. But you have 44. I'm interested in that figure.
The section that comes before.
Now 44, is this 44 homes?
It's not a duplicate penalty.
It's 44 homes?
Yes.
Okay. Now my question is, if it's 44 individual homes and it's, Laura has stated, and say they can't rent this, that's 44 vacant homes you may ever label it. they can't rent this, that's forty-four vacant homes you may have in the neighborhood, if you deny them from renting that. Would that increase a vacant, vacant houses? Would that increase the vacant houses if you don't allow them to rent? And the students, the problems, apparently you have a problem with college students. That's the problem I'm seeing, college students. They're wild and crazy, y'all know that. Some of them, I don't say all of them, but it's college students that people are having problems with. That's why this forty-two and forty-three came about anyway. So to me, if I was gonna solve a problem with college students, those particular college students that rent the house, I would kick them out of my neighborhood, and that they, uh, the university rent them a place to stay on campus. Because if you deny whoever the homes are, and you have forty-four violations, and you found them all in violation or whatever, uh, um, you have forty-four vacant homes, twenty-five vacant homes, two thousand, right now you have forty-four. If this thing went into law and you pass it tonight, it's gonna be forty-four vacant houses in the city of Salisbury. Then that, that creates a problem. Actions, the persons who are violating, the students, they're gonna bring their friends, they're gonna party, they're gonna get drunk, fall out, they're gonna stay, they're gonna do it out here, how much you gonna do to a landlord? It's just like a parent, they don't send the students to Salisbury to create a problem in the city of Salisbury. It's just like, I look a lot of westerns. The sheriff says, "We don't want you in our town." You put them out. If they don't know how to act and follow the rules, somebody's gotta be punished besides the person's furnishing them a liv-, living, um, place to stay. And we're trying to bring the young people downtown, we're trying to bring them, encourage them to stay here, but yet they do not know how to act like young men and young ladies, they're destruct-, they're terrorizing the neighborhood. So if they're terrorizing the neighborhood, that the landlords put somebody in there that's gonna be good to the neighborhood and follow rules and regulations, but if the particular stu-, students are carrying on like they're doing, kick them out of your neighborhood, kick them out of, and put them, let the college be responsible for them. Um, it's, to me, it's not fair, then you do this particular law, this is another reason why I didn't support it. It's not saying it's not right, it's because it goes all over Salisbury. This is not just for Camden or whoever has problems with students. I don't have problems with students in my neighborhood, don't have problems with college students, never did, never had problems with college students, but other people do. But forty-four in a particular, is it in a particular section?
Yes.
Thirty-nines in this particular section, so that's thirty-nine vacant homes you would have versus the five left. How many, where's my neighborhood at? Can you point my neighborhood at?
It's not on this map.
It's not on the map.
Up there.
It's way up there. So, so all I'm saying is, if I vote for this, then I have, um, people from different ethnic groups, and I know that they live in shifts, 'cause they work. One might live seven to three, one might live, they don't bother nobody, they don't have wild parties, there's no complaints to me, but we know it happens, 'cause you look at the, the vehicles in the yard, but you don't have any call, not too many people call from my neighborhood saying, "There's twenty people live in, uh, such, such a place," 'cause they're working people, and they send all their money home to, to wherever they come from. But the, this is a student problem, so what I'm seeing, you fix this, and those students are gonna go somewhere else, and there's gonna be forty-four more complaints, or fifty more complaints. Then you turn around, fix that, and the students, 'cause there's a growing, um, uh, uh, student population, Salisbury, then you gonna fix that, and there's gonna be some more problems. So the thing to me is that you're trying to legislate behavior, and kids today, I don't understand them, they're not like when we came, we went down, one of our parents to find out how we were acting, and even in a neighborhood, I, we, we would get it home, and when it was grown, you know? I had a cigarette in my hand, and somebody called my mother, said, "You know Shane had a cigarette in my mother, I was smoking, but I wasn't." But it's just a fact, that you didn't want your parents to find out what you were doing in a neighbor's house or another community. And this is all, to me, shows how students are acting. That's, 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 that's how I see this, uh, and I really don't think this is gonna help it. I really don't think it.
Mayor? Contrary to everything you're saying, there, there is nothing in here that legislates behavior. There is nothing in here that legislates based on who someone is, what their occupation is, what their age is, where they live, nothing. What this says is that if you break the law, uh, that already exists, you lose the privilege to continue to exist in a non-conforming status, you continue to get to essentially break the law. And, and, and you lose the privilege to treat your building as a business, as a rental unit for a period of time. Because what's happening is, you know, this, nothing in here says anything about how a student behaves.
I know that.
Because that law exists. We have laws that legislate behavior. Well, I'm not in charge of enforcing the law, but I think they are being enforced.
Somebody is, if, if, if they're having these problems, if they're having these problems, what I'm saying is, is that it looks like the student's a problem too. That's what it looks like to me. The student is a problem. The students are a problem. Because if the students weren't a problem, they, ten years ago, whenever they did this forty-two thousand four, three, whenever it was, they, when they came up here and wanted forty-two, if the students were not a problem, because that's what the law was targeted to, was targeted for student neighborhoods. It was not targeted to anybody else, am I correct?
You are correct. What, what happened during that time, and I, I didn't realize this conversation was gonna go back there, is that when we, the city went through and looked at the properties that were in question, they went when the students weren't here. So of course there was no problem with parking, of course there was no problem with trash, of course there was no problem with, they went when the students weren't here. So subsequently, a high number, a very high percentage of properties that asked for the exemption for the grandfather, and for three and for four, were given to it, because when we went through, what I say we, when they went through and looked at the properties in question, there was nobody there. I don't, I agree with Shani, no, I don't, I don't believe that this should, that they should be a year. I think it has to be enough for the landlord and the tenant to recognize, uh, that it is, that we're gonna hit you in your pocketbook if you're gonna hit us in our pocketbook. Because for the amount of time that Susan, the police in that area, uh, the amount of time that the code enforcement officers, the amount of time that's gonna be ended, that we're gonna end up in court, uh, uh, with the legal department, that's why I, we're just, we're asking really for suggestions from the council as to how long that should be, because it is pretty clear that they're, they really are thumbing their nose at us, both, both the people who are in the house that are over occupying, if they're at fault, and the landlord that signs them up, because every year at the end of the semester, the parents call my office and say, "They got pu-, the landlord put them out three days before the end of the semester, they can't get their, they can't get their deposit back, and he, and the landlord says it's because it's over occupied." And I was like, "But wasn't it the landlord that rented it to them?" And then you get the flip side as well. So again, what we have tried to do is take the city out of the relationship between tenant and landlord, and take a look at that property, and what those properties that are over occupied are doing to the value of the properties around them ought to be enough to make us act. So we're just asking for a discussion about this particular issue, and then if we can agree that we've gotta do something about it, if this is what we should do, and if this is, we can agree to that, how much is the time that we believe we should pull the license?
If I, if I could, just for a second, maybe throw a different light on this. We haven't even discussed the safety factor in this whole thing. You know, I'll, I'll speak not for a fireman, 'cause I'm, I am a fireman, so, but let me tell you that if you go up to a residence that has six cars parked on the grass in front of a home, and you go to fight a fire in that home, you don't know where anybody is. When it's a three-bedroom home and you have six or eight people in there, uh, that's a whole different discussion. But it's still an important discussion for us, because then we're putting not only those people in the house in jeopardy, but also the people who are fighting the fires in jeopardy. So I think as an aside, we should be mindful that there's an obligation that we have to the safety and well-being of all the people that we have inside those buildings as well. You did, if I have one question, Susan, you, you'd mentioned that of the number that you have, uh, that you have seen this year, how many, you, you've mentioned you have seen all the scenarios, you mentioned two. One where the, uh, renter, rent, yeah, the renter, um, has no idea that it was going on and is truly concerned, and then you have the other one where they know and there's nothing being done. Do you have figures to tell how many of each of those kind there are? Or is it just, you know of several cases?
As far as the violator is either the landlord or the tenant?
Yeah.
I would say that it's about, a toss of about half and half.
Okay.
If, we're gonna say if it's one or the other. I will say, this year, I have had more landlords violate than tenants.
Okay.
And that's why I feel very strongly that, I always feel that there is, I'll use the mayor's term, thumbing the noses up at us. I feel very strongly that if we don't do something with legislation now, this forty-four is probably gonna be in the eighties next year. And I know that Neighborhood Services does not have the staff to enforce it. We're struggling this year at forty-four, next year if we're in the eighties, or even in the fifties, we're gonna be really struggling. And I know that the police calls that have already happened, it's, it's been overwhelming so far, just in the few months that schools started in, in this particular neighborhood because of the occupancy. We can't, we can't go through this again. Something has to happen.
Mayor?
Mr. Speaker?
You know, the, the, the term "students" has been thrown out here, but I wanna ensure that everyone knows that out of these thirty-nine properties, we're talking about maybe two students in each property at the most, okay? That are out of compliance. So we're talking about a very, very, very small number of students who are the problem in this case.
If I could add one thing to that?
Sure.
Some of these structures that are even on Drew Hill, they're, that are over occupied, they're not all student rentals. So I don't, I don't personally wanna bash the students, they're not all student rentals.
Understand, okay. Jack said, you know, uh, fire, fire calls, I, I, you know, having been a fireman as well, I can fully understand that. But you know, with, with the over occupancy, we have the, the reemergence of the problem that we had when we first started with four to two, which was, uh, parking noise, trash, the number of visitors, uh, the number of police calls, on and on and on and on it goes. You know, we're, we have these properties that, um, that the landlords cannot or will not comply with the law. It is ultimately the responsibility of the landlords to ensure how many people are in that home and that they're, they're keeping with the numbers that are in compliance with the law. That's, that's the bottom, the bottom line. You know, it's not us against student, it's not us against the university, it's not us against anybody, except that, you know, we just, here's what we have and here's what we insist upon because of public safety, and that's just the deal of it. You know, and, and when, when we have, uh, penalties which include removal of a license temporarily or permanently, you have, as Shani said, empty houses. However, there are options for empty houses. Every one of those houses at one time was owned by a family, and people lived there, okay? And during the eighties and even the late seventies and on up, those houses were bought up, and bought up, and bought up, and sometimes, you know, even at a premium, uh, um, the house was, was for sale, and, and somebody offered, you know, X number, X number of dollars for it, and the landlord would come and offer X plus number of dollars for it, and, you know, anybody selling would say, "Sure, you know, I'll take the more money for it, that'll be fine." And in a way, our land, our, our, our neighborhoods were sort of decimated in that way. And we're, we're, you know, every year on my street, I know that we have to have sort of a, a house-by-house orientation of all sorts of kids every year, if not every semester, about when the trash goes out, where you park, what time you should be, you know, cutting down your noise, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It gets really tedious at times. And then there's that, the number of kids who are not, I mean, little kids, who are no longer living in our neighborhoods. They are not family neighborhoods for the most part anymore, you know, not on my street. And that's, that's sad. But if the penalties come up to the point where the landlord finds that it's not economically feasible for him to continue to be a landlord, there are A, other landlords willing to buy that house and make it so, or B, people who would like to live in town, and would like to have a single-family home of their own. And either way that goes, that's pretty much fine with me. But we have to get down to the fixing the problem part. And the problem is non-compliance with the, with the present law, and a law that needs strengthening to get some attention paid to it. And that's pretty much all I have to say about it.
I have a question. You gave us the numbers of citations, and with a clear escalation, however, there's a variable in there that's not accounted for, so to look at it looks pretty bad, but I can't say exactly what the difference is, because you said initially you would try, you would notify them and try to get them into compliance, and if they didn't get into compliance, then they'd get a citation. So we had ten at a, I don't know what point you started writing the citation, then going to trying to get them into compliance. But I, I think to, to compare apples to apples, I need the complaint numbers, the numbers of complaints and the numbers of citations.
Those were the numbers of order to reduce occupancies.
Okay, see, these are not the ones that actually resulted in citations?
No, they were order to reduce occupancies. They were, that is what we call a corrective action letter, that is a notice violation. That is when you are in violation of over occupancy, this is your order to reduce. Those were valid over occupancy violations.
And it really is another layer of warning that, that we put in place to us not to appear punitive right off the bat, rolling up there and going, "Everybody out." And it has had no, has had no effect.
Just one comment, from just from a legal point of view. We can't, there can be no distinction between students and non-students under the law.
Would be not.
Yeah, so that we, we can't do. And you're right, this, this, this layer here of, of different levels of warning, orders, suspension, revocation, um, and all of that is appealable, as I said before. So if, if the Board of, you know, Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals determine that the order was unreasonable or inappropriate, they can reverse it. So, and, and everyone has those appeal rights, that, that's all.
Well, are we following the same order of operations in each case, or did it switch? It seemed, I, it sounded like I heard there was a change.
Only until this year we changed. Two thousand ten until now, we've always followed the same procedure as far as our investigations, everything. This year, because the rate that we had and the severity, we started issuing citations at the time we found they were over occupied. When we would issue the order to reduce, we would also issue a citation in the amount of five hundred dollars.
But again, that doesn't change the number, because the number is just the determination that yes, you are over occupied?
Yes, and the, the code allows us to do that.
Is the progression or the, the procedure, what comes first, what you do next, what you do, I, I don't see that laid out in here. Am I missing that? We're just thinking from a standpoint of if someone appeals or, or sues us or, or whatever, particularly if we get into a suspension, they're gonna argue that, they're probably gonna take us to court. And I think we're probably better served if we have that delineated in the code itself, you know, here's what happens, then this happens, then this happens, then, so that it's fair across the board, and everybody knows exactly what's gonna happen, instead of, you know, someone who was cited in two thousand thirteen maybe has the same case in two thousand fourteen, or, or knows someone who does and says, "Wait, you didn't treat me the same." They got a warning, I got a citation, you know, I'm just wondering, should we have something in there about?
Your, your citation is similar to, like, when they go to the house and find something wrong with it, is that what it is? You have so many days to do.
A citation is what, is the same thing, a lot of people use citation as the same as corrective action letter, or citation is what we refer to as a notice of one for action.
It's a ticket.
Exactly.
What's the, find, what's the, what's the, when you, when you have a complaint?
Notice of violation, corrective action.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm talking about. After you do that, tell me the steps, how many, do you know, how many? tell me the steps. How many, do you know, how many have, when they get that letter, how many comply with it? Nobody?
Historically, on these cases?
Yeah, nobody.
Well, I'd have to pull the years past to see.
Oh.
We've had some that have complied. We've had usually almost all, except maybe one or two over the years have not complied. But I've had a very good percentage rate over the years that have, have complied.
That have complied, okay.
Yeah, had very, very good success with that.
Okay, good.
Had a couple that have gone into, have worn, had a good success rate in there. I believe that only one was overturned. And that was due to, let me say that was due to considering it mixing uses, it was unrelated and unrelated and unrelated. It's just a definition differentiation there. And so what happens is if, say, so you called me and you said, my neighbor's house is overoccupied. What we do initially is we issue an investigation of excess occupancy. That's just a, a letter, a soft letter that just we send out to the property owner saying, we have received it. We either have received information or we believe your property is overoccupied. Please call us so we can discuss this matter, perform an inspection. You have fourteen days.
And you do, go into the inspection, what, and look to see how many people's in there?
Yes.
And guess what they do?
Clean up.
They clean up.
Well, remember, we can't go in unannounced. We have to have permission.
I know, that's what I'm saying, yeah. Because then how they solve that problem?
And what we do is, since I've been, since I have handled these over the years and Tom knows I have different, different tactics on which, on which I have investigated over the years. A lot, I have most success with going to the rental, knocking on the door and talking to the tenants. It's all on how you talk to them. A lot of times, they just kind of stumble over their words and they'll end up admitting something about how many people live there, who they are, that kind of stuff. Sometimes I'll call, if I don't have luck, if there's no one there, I'll call the owner and they'll tell me something. They say, oh, I didn't know. I didn't, I only have so-and-so living there. If someone tells me something over the phone, if they admit to me it's overoccupied or the tenants tell me face-to-face, what they tell me is enough because I can testify to that. That right there is all I need. I, I document it, issue the order to reduce occupancy. There we are. There's our corrective action letter. That sixty-day order to reduce starts that day.
But you only come out when someone complains about it, correct?
Unless we observe it. There are times that we observe it.
So, so let me ask this regarding the change to fifteen twenty-six one-ten and the existing requirements in fifteen twenty-six one-ten. Upon determining that over occupancy is, is occurring or that a violation has occurred, this says the NSCC shall initiate an action to deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew a registration or license. And you'll mail it and the notice shall state. Does that imply that your current practice of determining that there is a violation, giving a period of time to rectify and, and then issuing a citation or a violation or municipal infraction, does that mean that practice would come to an end? You know, right now, you, you give a period with which to comply and then and then at that point in time, the action to deny, revoke, or suspend or not renew a registration occurs. But what this says is, is once the violation is determined to exist, immediately NSCC shall initiate an action to deny, revoke, suspend. What I'm asking is,
Will we still issue a fine?
Would you still, would you still wait that, would you still give them?
Sixty days to comply?
No, the fourteen, the fourteen days or what used to happen before this year. You said, you said up until this year, there was, you would, you would notify them, hope to hear a response back, ensure that there was, and then move forward. But this year, it's been initiated, or the, the fine would be initiated immediately. Would now the fine and the action to deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew a registration, would that happen immediately?
I think we would still, we would still issue the investigation of excess occupancy because I think that they, just because someone calls and says you're overoccupied, doesn't mean that you are overoccupied. The same difference as someone calling and saying they have rubbish in their yard.
So it's really, so it's really a notice of an investigation beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
All that does is just, is sending them, is alerting them. We're looking into it.
So it affords, it affords the person to either fix it quickly?
Well, we're letting them know that we're looking into it.
Okay.
Call us, let's talk this out, let's figure out what's going on. If we find that it's overoccupied, if we're gonna be this, if we're gonna be this heavy-handed, if we're gonna pull someone's license at, at the time, we always have the ability to write the fine at the notice, at the time that we notice a violation. We can, we have the ability to write the fine at the time, just like we do, like we've been doing this year. How this administration feel about us continuing to write the fine at the time we've noticed that it's, like we have been doing this year.
Continue. I mean, if, if I could just weigh in, here's the impetus here. We had a previous practice of identifying what we believed were overoccupied structures. And we would reach out to the owners of those structures and say, hey, we believe that for whatever reason, your property may or may not be overoccupied. That would create a dialogue. Based on that exchange, then we would determine whether or not they were overoccupied. More often than not, we would find out that they were, if it had been brought to our attention. And we would give them sixty days to come into compliance.
Okay.
We've even had appeals go to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals and the board would say, well, it's only eighty-four days, we'll wait till the end of the semester, they can stay there till then, and then they have to go. Okay, that's fine. But that was ten, twelve times a year. Okay? So now we're finding that we're having more and more situations where we're identifying over occupancy in the same neighborhoods, same landlords. So, just like we've had the ability to do all along, we're saying, you're either speeding or you're not speeding. You're speeding, here's your ticket. Because we've got to find a way to curb that behavior. Whether it be the students or the tenants, whoever they may be, but leave the students out of the equation. And the landlords have a responsibility to police that occupancy. We're hearing everything. You get this. You talk to the tenant, you talk to the landlord, you get this.
All right. And in the, in the neighborhood meetings that Chief Duncan and, and you have attended to talk with people, you know, following incidents, investigations, the landlords that have been there and present have said over and over again, take them to task. Do something about this. We are trying, you should be trying too.
And, and the only thing that I would add is that if, if under fifteen twenty-six one-ten, and we wanted to be able to include the opportunity to revoke, suspend, not renew a license. Because previously, in fifteen twenty-six, it only spoke to failure to comply with that chapter. Am I right, Mark? If you didn't do something in terms of licensing, you're getting a license or registering your unit, we wanted to be able to incorporate language into fifteen twenty-six one-ten that says also, if you violate the occupancy provisions, then, and this is what I would suggest, we would say the housing official may as opposed to shall.
I, I agree.
So that, so that you have the ability,
Yeah.
You have the ability to suspend.
Well, let me, let me put it to you this way, if we're all thinking out loud. If the quasi-judicial board that you can appeal to, which we have changed, which I will say out loud, I appreciate greatly the changes to that board over the last several years. Fox is not in the henhouse anymore. Saying "may" and not "shall", I think it leaves it open to not interpretation.
I think you need to leave the discretion.
I think, I think it does, and that's why the word "may" is used frequently, and that's, I mean, that puts the onus on.
Again, but the onus, it shouldn't be on this person. The onus should be on the people who live.
But it is in so many other cases in our code.
If we want to make.
And I'm not saying I love that either.
Mr. President.
Hold on, Mr. Tillman, then Mr. Heath.
From the language, we, you don't need to say "may" because the, the following language gives the options. And, you know, it says there, deny, revoke, suspend. So you could literally suspend a license for two months if you wanted to. It's not mandatory that you take it away. And, and I think that maybe what you need is a set of policies and procedures within the department that you wish to be followed. You know, one, two, and three, if that's what you want to do. But I don't think we necessarily have to codify it. But I think the, the problem that you've got is you might have the guy who has viol, he's owned ten rental properties. He's in violation in every one of them. If you, if you say for the first offense on this house, you're, we're only going to suspend, and the first house on the next one is only, you, you get, you get a guy who basically frequently violates the law and gets away with it repeatedly. So, I mean, you, you, there should be some discretion, I think, in your department head to make that decision.
Mr. Heath?
Yeah, I, I think that whatever we do, whatever we do, forget what they do, whatever we do, we need to be consistent. If we're consistent, there's no argument. What, how they respond and how we respond after that, that's a different story. But we have to be consistent in the way we handle it. And if, if it requires clarification, so be it. But we need to make sure that we follow what we say we're gonna do.
Which I think requires some level of policy setting at the executive, or at the, you know, implementation level, at the administrative level. But I do, but I think I think fifteen twenty-six one-ten is clear. Ms. Mitchell?
I, I was gonna suggest, there's always that "up to and including". What if we did that kind of language and say, and say that they shall take action, up to and including deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew the registration?
Shall initiate action, up to and including denial, revocation, suspension,
That way they can follow the policy and all their steps. It says they shall take action, but it doesn't say, because the, the way I read this right now is exactly the way you did initially. Once it's determined there's over occupancy, they shall do one of those things.
Well, and there's, there's lots of options already in there. You know, denial, suspension, revocation, non-renewal.
But the fine's not even in there. That may be a first step or working with them to, to reduce the, the over occupancy.
Where is that? Where is that in the code? That is in there?
It's in fifteen twenty-four.
Fifteen twenty-four, okay.
But I mean, in this, in this section, it just does. I have another question. If it's determined that way, and then the other thing that, back to again, that we keep talking about is, is our fine limitation appropriate? And I don't think that it is. There are so many things that keep coming up that that thousand-dollar cap, or in this case, it's at, setting at five hundred, just isn't enough to motivate people to do the right thing. It has to hurt worse to do the wrong thing than to do the right thing.
But don't we find that a judge says that, I don't want to tell you what they say.
Well, they're gonna spend more than that getting to the judge, though.
Well, that's what I mean, but a judge will say that this, this is too high. Or, I don't like your laws, property rights, drop it to a dollar.
Mr. Mayor, has it been our experiences that that's what happens?
Yes.
Certainly in the case of first offenses, the judges rarely give a substantial.
Take a look at the larger picture here. You all have passed laws that can get sent to a quasi-judicial board that can turn them over for a group of people who aren't elected. Since the seventies, we have gone to local managers for properties. We have gone to being at every stakeholders meeting that we could possibly have during the week that staff has to attend in every place, and they are happy to do it. We get to the point where we can, we talk about a tenant's bill of rights, and that's later. We do four to two, but then we effectively make it useless because most of the properties got grandfathered in. And here we are, a different council, a different mayor, a different decade, talking about the same problem. Now, we may have some not recourse, some the end may be in sight a little bit with the way that the comprehensive plan is drawn with the university district being on the other side of South Division Street. Now, whether or not South Division Street, Dykes Road, you know, that street light's coming now. I mean, the, 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 the stoplight's coming there at Dykes now to try and line everything up and get traffic going back there. I mean, at some point, Mr. Heath's gonna have to get home. And, you know, we're, we don't want to make it so that, that, because if Mr. Heath and, and I will say this, if former Council President Smith are both on South Division Street and can't get home because there's so much there, because that infrastructure is not wide enough for that, all I'm saying is that the university district is going, is gonna go over on that side. So that leaves the question, if the college, if we're gonna, if we're gonna work with the university to, to make, to make the college population be on that side of Division Street. That may give some rest, some, some respite to our neighbors. But then what happens to those houses that are there? So I completely agree with, with Councilwoman Shields. The idea that you leaving them there empty for that, for a, a long length of time. So where is the middle ground here with?
I don't think it's something that needs to be in, in the code. I, I think that what's, what it says here, and actually, I, I I take back what I said about it saying "up to and including" because I, I think this shows enough, this offers enough option. Shall initiate action to deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew. So there's a whole range of options already offered. This includes all of those options. As long as, as Mr. Heath said, there's a consistent policy for how that determination is made, then I think you have all the tools in your toolbox. I think that's, that's the purpose of adding this phrase, or with the occupancy provisions of this code, to to the code here.
One other thing, Mr. President, the, the language under fifteen twenty-four one-six-four-zero actually says that the, they, they determine that the occupants, that the unrelated occupants violates, not violated. So if we're giving these people a warning in advance, if we're sending out a notice that you're in, we believe you're in violation, it gives them an opportunity to not violate.
Essentially.
It, it, basically, if they bring their property into immediate compliance, they're not gonna have a problem.
Right, right.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you buy a house, two-story house, a homeowner, and I put twenty people in it, how you address that? How do you dress a homeowner's over occupancy?
Okay.
I'm thinking back on Mr. Heath, when he said he goes in for a fire and the house is over occupied, because that happens also. I'm not renting anything.
Who are those twenty people?
Twenty people? Just say I've got twenty people in my house.
Are they twenty family members?
Might not be. Might not be. You go in there and ask for your identification and a birth certificate. Well, how, how you handle those situations?
Are they living there?
They're living there.
It's over occupied by square footage.
It's over occupied, so what do you do with a homeowner?
Condemn him.
That's a safety and sanitation.
Same, same thing.
And be condemned and issue a vacate order.
In order to, in order to reduce occupancy.
It's supposed to be seven people in there, you know, three people, seven people, grown people.
I'd have to measure the bedrooms, because you could be in violations of the same thing. Round us for a footage.
And those are international standards that you're using as well. Those are not standards that we came up with.
Because that's the question gonna pop up, you see, because we're, we're talking about rentals. But we want also addressed, and so it's already being addressed in. Because there's situations like that too. I'm buying a house to bring everybody in the brother.
And, and the same thing pertains to this issue too. The bedrooms would have to be enough. You have to have seventy for one person, a hundred and twenty square feet, seventy square feet for one person, one twenty for the second. So that's, that's the issue you have with that many people.
Yeah. I mean, we're, and this isn't the only place, we're over in, in the president's neighborhood right now dealing with packed basements without egr, egress, I always say egrit, which I know is not.
They don't have egrits.
They don't have egrits in the, in the basement.
They have ingress.
But we are dealing with, and actually, we are actually having some luck working with landlords to and we have not just gone in and said, these people weren't supposed to be in the basement, you're done, you're out. We have said, this is what you have to do to this property if you are going to use this. This is what you have to do. And they have begun to comply. We also have that issue of the thousand-square-foot houses that have the little, the little, the little second floor type, you know, type situation as well. So, we're happy with this language. We're not gonna put a timeline on it. Is that, is that what we're?
I, I don't, that's my opinion. I haven't heard a consensus.
What you're saying, I disagree.
Not adding a time limit to the suspensions.
I disagree.
Not allowing, not allowing, not adding a time limit, the The mayor asked for a, a time window to be added to the term suspension.
What time, what, what kind of time limit, Mayor?
Uh, you know, I'm with you. I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't think a year is, that, that, that doesn't do us any good, that creates another problem that we're trying to deal with in other places. So, you know, I, I don't wanna say it like, well, I do wanna say it like this. I wanna hit them enough in the pocketbook to get their attention. I wanna be able to say to the people who live around here, we're on this. For whatever reason this house got like that, we're gonna get it back to the way that it's legally supposed to be. So, you know, for what these houses are going for a month, for what some of the houses that are going for, uh, in North Camden, on Ohio, and on, uh, Maryland Avenue, I mean, you're talking like seven, eight hundred dollars a month per room. We're not talking the whole house is seven hundred dollars a month. We're talking it's seven hundred dollars a month per room, per person. So people making some bank. So the question is, is how much do we take out, out of there that, that gets their attention, uh, that, that these laws are made so that property values everywhere around you don't continue to sink?
Well, there's something that we have to think about, too, and that is, you know, what, some of these houses have periods of occupancy and then periods of vacancy. Like, you know, the entire summer, some of these houses aren't rented.
Right.
And we have to have a period that's going to include a period that's going to be a rental period, not just, you know, oh, no rental for you for the summer.
I mean, that's exactly why I said-
Like, don't throw me in the briar patch, right, you know?
That's why I said a year, only because, I mean, you, you wouldn't want it to be a couple of months, 'cause, ah, sure, lose a semester, lose a summer, you know, behavior doesn't change.
I, I was actually thinking a period of thirty to ninety days, because not only do they have the loss of the revenue from that month, they've got the turnover expenses. If it has to be vacant for a month, they are also occurring that turnover and the re-advertising and the rental and the paint and, and all that stuff, so that's an additional hit. But if it's the, the renters that are doing this, and, and truly feel that the landlord didn't know, uh, you still have that option of doing a thirty day, uh, where it says to them, you should have, if you feel like they did know, ninety days without that seven hundred dollars per room and the turnover expenses, that's a pretty big hit. Even in those places that aren't renting, most of them, the summer is not really ninety days, and, but the time they get out of school and the time they're starting to rent to come back, because they wanna get it moved in before classes start and all that, if they can't even rent the place for ninety days, then they're into the school year in most cases, and they've missed the influx of people coming in looking for rentals. So, I mean, while they'll probably still be able to rent it, they're missing the prime shopping season or, or marketing season, if you will. So I think, my concern is always about leaving things too open, because we all know, we're sitting here having the discussion, and we can all reach consensus about how long is too long, and how much, but five years from now, if none of us are sitting at this table, or ten years from now, if none of us are still in, in our current positions and, and doing this, and someone picks that up and reads it and says, oh, I can revoke them for a year, I can revoke them for two years, it doesn't say. And then you get disparate treatment from different-
We, we keep saying we're not talking about college students, but everything goes toward that, because you're talking about when they're unoccupied in the summer. So we're talking about, this law is not for college students, but this law is for college students. That's how I look at it, and that's how I've always looked at it. That's why the forty-two came about. Sister Mary Elizabeth sat in here, bless her heart, and she went against it, the forty-two, 'cause it was unfair, 'cause you were targeting a certain population, but it was gonna affect other populations in the city. So if we're gonna talk about, um, try to be political correct, and I'm not that, you know? But if we're gonna talk about the problem, we need to leave out the time period that we need to run, either it's gonna be six months, that they lose their license of three months, but don't decipher the timeframe, 'cause if you say the timeframe that they're in the school system, see what I'm saying? You're still targeting college kids.
Well, my, my point was that if, if it's not a college rental, then it's going to affect regardless of what time of year. The only scenario where the summer might be a, a less hurtful hit would be if it were a college rental over the summer here, if they're losing those time frames. It wasn't, I wasn't talking just about college rentals, it's just that-
Yeah.
In that case, there, it could be less of a hit burden if they weren't gonna be rented anyway, but it still hits in that time period that it could hurt.
If I was gonna be fair-
Can I, can I hook my caboose to that thought there of yours? And, and this deals with, um, um, security deposits. Security deposits are not just for damages, but these security deposits could be actually for over occupancy as well. You, the tenant, have over occupied my, my place, and it's gonna cost me fines or, you know, my, my, missing my, uh, my license for a while, so I'm gonna keep your security deposit. And, you know, these could be, I mean, security deposits, numbers aren't carved in stone, they could be increased to cover an entire six months of missing income, and people would pay it. People would, uh, come up with the money, because they want a place to live, you know, students especially, yeah.
I think if I went along with this, um, 'cause forty-four is too many.
It is.
It is really too many. Um, the time you do the, the notice of, or whatever you say it is, the first notice, that would be the time to clock, when you think, when the clocks start then.
That's when the clock starts ticking.
The clocks start ticking then, and they have, how many days to make it right, thirty?
They have sixty days to reduce occupancy.
Reduce occupancy. That's, that's two months, right? So if they make it right, and, and it's not made right, then if they say, we have sixty days to make it right, or two months to three months would be, I guess, the, and I would say at least six months to make it right, because you know, that's what I would say. Because the reason why I don't agree with the whole year is because I live across the street from the house, you know, on Jermaine Circle, and poor, the poor lady, parents left for this house, and she could not get in compliance, she lost her compliance to make, make it to a apartment, she only ate two apartments. And she now don't think she ever got it right, and it just stayed there empty. That's my whole concern, is that when we do this, we don't want empty houses all being themselves, because it's two months, and I think if somebody had, doesn't, and then you have to, if they don't comply in two months, then the third would be eviction for the people to get out, right?
We would issue a fine to the property owner?
A fine, that's this third month. All right, then when you, when do you vacate the people?
We actually don't ever issue.
Oh, you never vac, tell them to get out?
Well, that's what, the, the order to reduce is basically a vacate.
So everybody that's in there has to leave?
It's the, the people who are over occupying have, has to vacate, yes.
Okay, all right. So I was trying to do a timeframe, so it wouldn't be a year, so it wouldn't be two.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. So with six months due.
So while we're hitching our wagons to things, I wanna hitch my wagon to that. I look at, I look at the, uh, the words being used here, denial of a license, as, as having an obviously, obvious implication for when it would happen, but not a time implication. Non-renewal as having, uh, an implication that it, again, would have a, a time that that would happen, but not necessarily a time period that it would affect it one year or more. Revocation is permanent, and so suspension, I would think you would want it to be less than a year, uh, or, uh, would make sense to me. Six months makes sense to me, so I'll, I'll hitch my wagon to that.
Six months.
Do we need to write that in there?
Suspension for, uh, on line thirty-three, I guess we could say that. Six months.
Thirty-four.
Did you say line thirty-three?
You mean line seventy-two.
Seventy-three?
What did I say? Thirty-three. I meant seventy-three, I apologize.
It would look really odd.
We all, we did all go to thirty-three.
Hold on, hold on, I wanted to, yeah, that wouldn't make sense at all.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Is there a consensus for that?
I'm good with that, too. Good thought.
No.
And?
Was, forgive me, was the language for up to or for?
It was for.
Six months.
I think at a hundred and eighty days.
I just asked the question, did that mean that they, would they have to register this vacate, but they have to do that at the hundred and eighty day mark? And I'm, that's-
That, well, then, my question would be, at what point should license be revoked?
Yeah.
In other words, if we're going to have suspensions for six months, then we should determine at what point they're revoked. That, that, if we're gonna keep that language in there, we need to, in other words, before it was, you could set up a policy that we're gonna, the first time will be a suspension for six months, the next time will be, you know, a year, and then it's gone, three-strike, you know, I mean, we could do it that, but I, I, I need a little more guidance, if you're gonna say that, as to when it would then be appropriate to rev, and it would clearly at times be appropriate to revoke a license on a property.
But the second time being-
But where would you draw that line?
Second.
And then third time revoked? Second time be a year, third time be revoked? Well, I think that's a moot point, in my opinion, because if you suspend someone's rental license for six months, most of these are set up as LLCs, they're independent, and they're just gonna board it up and walk away and dissolve the company, and it's gonna sit vacant. I don't see somebody being able to, or being willing to, I mean, o- obviously, hope is that'll make them not do this, but if someone gets in that situation, I think it's gonna end up vacant, board it up and not come back.
Yeah, I, I could see that happening, um, but I'm also confident that not a single one of these properties, that would happen. These, they have turned over, even rentals have turned over many times, and they get sold. They don't get boarded up, they don't sit.
A new, a new owner has-
They're gonna sell it to a new LLC, it's probably the same owner or a different family member, but it's, and then what are we gonna do?
Well, the code-
Is that suspension gonna carry over to the new owner?
The code allows for that, basically, that if you change, if the new owner occupies, they can be, they can bring the property in compliance.
Right, I remember that in the other language, that, the other ordinance we did, now I'm skipping the all of a sudden which one it was, but we have language in there, if it turned over, then they could bring it back, and it was, uh, the chronic, habitual offender contract. Uh, but we don't have that in here. I, I don't know, I, I think six months is excessive. Well, you could always come back.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Heath.
If we leave it in the procedures and don't put it in the resolution, the procedures could be changed easier than the resolution?
Yes, 'cause they're, they're changed at the staff level.
So, may I suggest that maybe what we wanna do is leave it in the procedure form, see how it works, and then the resolution has its, its, its guts and its intent, yet we still leave the flexibility, so we won't have to come back and redo this whole thing in, in a year and a half when something happens.
And we've equipped the, the housing official with multiple tools-
Correct.
-to use to rectify the situation.
And as long, as long as it's consistent, we're okay.
Originally, that's why I was not for a timeframe on suspension, um, for that to be set up in policy. I, I think six months is where I would settle, but if we didn't add that, then, I mean, that could be dictated in policy and only change with a revision in the policy. Is that, is everyone comfortable with leaving that out for that purpose, um, and allowing these things, and, and what would elevate a suspension to a revocation? Mr. Tillman, are you comfortable with, with that being determined by, uh, housing policy that is managed at the administrative level?
Yeah, and, and, and I was just gonna point you down here to fifteen twenty-six one-ten, uh, D. After denial, non-renewal, revocation, or suspension, the rental dwelling unit shall be vacated within sixty days and shall not be reoccupied until all violations are corrected and a license or registration is granted pursuant to. In, in other words, it, that, all of these actions are really predicated on the fact that the owner has an option to make it right.
Yeah, it's vacated.
That's the whole point. I mean, that's already in here.
It's the people that's over occupied, not the original renters. See, that was my confusion probably years ago.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Everybody's gonna be, what are you doing?
And, and, and let's go back to the six-month thing for one moment. Sticking to, sticking to fifteen twenty-six one-ten D, that after denial, non-renewal, revocation, or suspension, the rental dwelling unit shall be vacated within sixty days and shall not be reoccupied until all violations are corrected and a license or, and or registration is granted, blah, blah, blah. What that implies to me also is that if the housing official has the flexibility to reissue a license at sixty days, whether it's to that owner or a different owner, the house could be reoccupied at sixty days. So if we add a six-
Well, that is suspended for sixty days. In other words, it, it has to be vacated within sixty days.
Well, I get that, but, but it also says that it shall not be reoccupied.
Correct, right. So theoretically, it could be-
Theoretically, it's a sixty-day, it's a sixty-day minimum suspension, not a six-month minimum suspension, is what D implies to me.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think we could leave a timeframe out of suspension. I know we just bounced that back, but I think I'm learning.
I think the key, as Mr. Heath said, is whatever policies and procedures are used must be consistent, and they must be fair.
Now, some departmental policies come to the council for approval, and some don't. Is this one that will or won't?
Why would, uh, forgive me, they haven't won since I-
Financial policies, those come here, those come to us for approval.
Administrative financial policy?
The employee handbook, if I recall correctly, comes to us for approval.
That does.
So there are some things that do and some that don't, so my question is, will this or won't?
Historically, the NSCC does, they do not come to council, if they are in term.
From a matter of, of, I mean, again, this is, I have no experience with, uh, policies, administrative policies, um, but just from a matter of my understanding of the law, they would not come to a legislative body, that being the definition and purpose of a, an administrative policy. But, um, Mr. Tillman, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I think the ones that do come to council are generally the ones where the, it's delegated with instruction that we're gonna approve-
Right.
-the procedures, that's in the statute.
That's legislative authority-
That's a legislative-
Delegated to-
Correct.
-the administration, rather than how the law is going to be carried out.
I mean, this law is very flexible, as written, as you've just pointed out, there's no minimum time for suspension, that there is, you know, so to, to me, if you were not happy with the way it's being administered, then you can change the law. If it, if at any point, it, I mean, you know, certainly, they couldn't permanently revoke someone's license and you not be able to change that, you could.
Right.
You could say there will be no permanent revocations, and you could legislatively change that.
Jake, I still need your help in line seventy-two, understand why, or Mark, why this doesn't say, when the infraction is found or determined to be valid, that the NSCC shall take actions to deny, revoke, suspend. I understand those are a number of options, but it, to me, it says you will do one of those. You can't just fix it and find it and move on, you have to have a-
Yeah, that was my, that was my-
An impact on your-
That was my question about procedure, about-
Well, they, they, I think the answer to that is that if you say may, you're giving your administrator the option, if he wants to, not to do anything with his or her friends.
That's where we started.
And, and, and so I, I think that what you're saying is that they have to take some action if they find the violation to have occurred.
So Laura, the, the only thing that I wanted to clarify is what, what it seemed was happening. Um, and it, and I guess it still, what was happening is there was a notice that you are being investigated-
Correct.
-and that after some period of time, if a determination was made that someone was in violation, there was a fine issued at that point?
There's-
Or only in certain cases?
Not until now, we were, well, here's, here's the procedure, correct, there is a investigation in excess of occupancy-
Right.
-that's upon either-
That's upon either complaint.
Discovery or complaint, sure.
And then, once it is determined that it's over occupied, is the order to reduce.
Okay.
And then, if they do not comply after sixty days, if it's not compliance, we would issue a fine.
Okay, what's, what happened this time was, the order to reduce was accompanied by a fine.
Exactly.
By the, the citation, okay, so. Sorry, go ahead Laura. Yeah, yeah.
The notice of violation, and then the order to reduce, is that the corrective action letter?
Investigation, investigation of excessive occupancy first, after it's determined that it is over occupied, we would issue the order to reduce occupancy.
Which is the corrective action letter.
Which is the corrective action letter.
So the notice of violation, corrective action, letter, and order to reduce is all the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, we keep interchanging terms, so it's getting confusing.
Yes.
Okay, that's thirty days.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, okay. And that's when the fine is issued?
This time, yes, that's when we were issuing the fine.
After sixty days.
They have sixty days to reduce occupancy.
And then your fine after that.
If they do not reduce, yes, and we can issue that daily, we have the ability to issue that daily.
Retroactively to when?
No, each day there, each day, each day thereafter the violation of excessive.
Well, I, let me just say that I appreciate this, simply because we, as the two branches, are doing due diligence, we'll wait to see whether or not the quasi judicial board and the judiciary will agree with us, and then I will come back and say to you, thank you for this, but this didn't accomplish what we wanted to accomplish, or it did accomplish, and I promise you that once we get a few of these under our belt, that we will come back to you and say.
Then it's no.
Yeah, because, like I said, if Susan makes the, if she does her may, right, that's what we're going to have, right, may, she may.
No.
Shall.
I'm recommending that it be shall do one of these various things.
Okay, if she does her shall, and it gets appealed, and it goes to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and it gets turned over, then we will know something. If it goes to the judiciary, if we get it through the Board of Housing Adjustments and Appeals, and it goes to the judiciary, and the judiciary strikes it down, then I'll come back to you and say, this is, these are the situations we find ourselves.
So, so Mr. Mayor, based on what I'm hearing, I want, I wanted to respond to your question, Laura, I guess what I'm seeing now is, the status quo is noti- notification of an investigation being conducted, some period of time, order to reduce slash all the other names for it, sixty day period, citation for non-compliance, daily if necessary. What this does is says, in, notice of investigation, some period of time, order to reduce accompanied by denial, revocation, suspension, or non-renewal, sixty day period, citation, 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 citation.
Correct.
For failure to comply. So, it does not create a buffer between the order to reduce and the denial, revocation, suspension, or non-renewal, which makes sense to me, because the moment you know you're under investigation, is the moment where you start to fix it.
Right, and once it is fixed, you'd be eligible to get your license back anyway.
So the, the beginning clause in that sentence on sixty-nine, is that the sixty day period? If after any period of compliance, this chapter has expired, is that the sixty days? Because you're telling me that the notice, the corrective action letter, and the, the fine are all coming, they're all one thing. And to me, I read this as, at the time that you say there is a violation, which is right then, you have to deny or revoke or suspend the license, that's what I'm reading.
That's when the revocation will be issued, when the order to reduce.
So, they get a letter of investigation, and then.
No, that is issued prior to.
Right, so they get the investigation letter, and then, if the next day you determine that there's over occupancy through talking to somebody or observation or whatever, to me, I'm reading this that one of those things has to happen, because it says shall. So there's no sixty days to clean it up, there's no fine, I don't see where that buffer is for correction.
If, it could be the next day that they're found in violation, it could be. All that investigation of excessive occupancy is just alerting them that the city is investigating them, that it appears that it's over occupied. So it could be the next day that they are found in violation and they're revoked or suspended.
So in other words, they don't have sixty days.
So the landlord might not know about it, they have no idea.
No, 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 they, they definitely do not have sixty days, and, and never did, never did.
No. No.
The difference, the difference is now accompanying the order to reduce is, is the stick. Accompanying the order to reduce is the stick. The, the question I think, the question I think, and I didn't realize the answer to this, but the question I think is, should there be a minimum and maximum to the period of time between the notification of an investigation and the order to reduce and stick? Because I, I see, understand, and agree with, the order to reduce being accompanied by the denial, revocation, suspension, or non-renewal, but I.
Got to be some opportunity to fix it.
We, well, I mean, yes and no, I mean, you, you never should have, yeah, never should have broken the law, however.
Before the.
And it hurt the law.
But we don't know if we did, I mean, what I'm, what I'm saying is, follow me here, she said, there's investigation.
I don't, I don't really care if the tenant did it, or if the, you know, to me, the, the problem ultimately comes down to fixing the behavior of that landlord.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't see that being upheld in court, I think we're going to spend a lot of time and a lot of money, losing a lot of pieces.
So, once again.
If there's no opportunity in there to correct it, from, here's your letter that we're investigating you, and the next day you're suspended because we, we have in our minds determined that it's true, and the landlord may not.
But we didn't send you the letter so that you would have time to fix it, we sent you the letter to tell you we were, we were deciding whether or not you were doing something wrong.
How long did it have to fix it before it's suspended?
Well, according to what I was just told.
So, once again, hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Tillman?
Just, just, because I think the real issue here is that we're not punitively suspending a license for a term, like a prison term, that's not happening. We're basically saying that the license is suspended until you get it right, and.
That's not right.
And, so, it says, I mean, in, under D, that's what that says.
That is what D says.
After denial, non-renewal, but what I'm wondering is, what's the difference here, and I didn't write this law either, this was written long before I came along, and I guess I should have called this as I was reviewing it, but, what's the difference between revocation or suspension if under D? If, once you make it right, you have the right to get it again, I mean, it, it, revocation implies some permanency, maybe we don't need the word suspension at all, that if you're, if you're in violation, we're going to revoke your license until you get it right. Because, because then revocation isn't a permanent thing, it's just, it's just a solution, and as long as you're in violation, your license is revoked.
Revocation means you'll have to reapply.
You'll have to file a new application at that point, that's, because I think that's really what it's intended to do here.
Ms. Phillips.
Well, I have a question, if, if we revoke their license until they get it right, what does that mean? They, they vacate, they, okay, they reduce occupancy on a Thursday, and Friday they get their license back? So they didn't really lose it?
Well, if they don't have a license to rent the place, that means all the tenants have to move.
No, but in the case where they.
They should, they should lose it for a period of time, be advised for, for breaking that.
That, that's an issue that, that council would have to decide, because right now, there is no period of time.
Well, and another way to look at D is to remove the word revocation and just consider revocation as permanent, that's what revocation means, it is permanent. So, that after denial, non-renewal, or suspension, the rental dwelling unit shall be vacated within sixty days and shall not be reoccupied until violations are corrected, and a license and/or registration is granted by NSC pursuant, I, I guess you'd need to separate it from the first phrase, but, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Revocation is revocation.
It's just how you define it, you know, if, if you wanted to suspend it.
She, if someone gets a warning that something's hanging off the house, they have so many days to fix it. So if they get a warrant or whatever, the notification saying it's over occupied, they're going to have their license suspended at the time they get the notification, is that what you're saying?
No, that, that this is not, this, this whole thing is not for not complying with an order to reduce. This is for over occupying to begin with.
Over occupying, so if you find it over occupied, are you telling me the day that they get the notice, the day after a day that they're going to get whatever you want to say?
I think the investigation of excessive occupancy is what's confusing with the whole thing.
It's got to be, it's got to be confusing, I was, I was right till you start talking.
Because the, the.
So I'm glad you're with me.
The investigation of excessive occupancy. The, the investigation of excessive occupancy is not intended to give them a period of time to make it right. All it's doing is notifying them that they need to contact the city of Salisbury, that there's a problem.
Uh huh.
That's all.
But they won't be.
That's the, that's the only intention, it's not, it's not to give them an opportunity to comply.
They don't even know what the problem is until.
Right, right, there is no opportunity to comply with that, in, of, that's the, excuse, occupancy, nothing.
Okay.
There's no, no compliance window.
However, I, I understand that, and, and I, I understand the purpose of that, however, what I'm wondering now, if, because my assumption was that there was a, a period of time that the investigation would take, would, would occur. Can you, can you say with any certainty what your shortest and longest investigation periods have been?
It could be one day, the, the longest that we carry out that investigation period is fourteen days, we refiled that letter for fourteen days.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is, if, if we were to say that NSC, NSCC shall, after a period of investigation, to be no more than fourteen days, and bear with me on this thought, and no less than three days, initiate an action to deny, that would give at least seventy-two hours for the occupants and the landlord, one, to either comply, or two, to turn their noses and, you know, and say, I'm not going to comply. It would give them an opportunity to take that breather and figure out who's responsible. One, it gives you time to figure out whether or not the violation exists and get your paperwork together. Two, it gives them time to figure out, well, am I, am I in violation? And if so, what am I going to do about it, including if somebody's got to pack up their stuff and leave? Again, not encouraging someone to violate the law, but it gives you that period of time to conduct an investigation, at which point, shall initiate an action to deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew a registration or license if they are found to be in violation. And then, down in D, that after denial, non-renewal, or revocation, the rental dwelling unit shall not be reoccupied until all violations are corrected and a license or registration is granted by NSC, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, after sixty days.
Can I just add this? The, the only piece that's missing there is that this is not a grass or rubbish violation by where we say, you've got seven days to clean up your yard or cut your grass.
And we're not saying that here, either.
And what we're trying to say here is that you're in violation of the occupancy limitations, and we're going to fine you, and we're going to suspend your license or your unit registration. I don't want to provide any opportunity to come into compliance.
Wiggle room, right, Tom, but, but what we're saying here, what we're saying here is not, what we're saying here is, is don't break the law in the first place. However, rapidly increasing incidence of this particular violation of the law indicates to me that it's hap- happening and it's going to continue to happen. So in order to have an effective policy that addresses that and reduces the incidence of that, it seems to me that there has to be some way to say, when we know it's happening, gotcha, we're going to make you fix it, and it's going to take us a couple of days to get our stuff together, so if you want to make this better for you in the neighborhood, then make it better for you in the neighborhood, and don't let us catch you around here doing this again. It's not explicit in the law saying, you have three days to get your situation fixed. What it is saying is that acknowledging, you're not supposed to do this in the first place, if we find you doing it, we're going to take your license, but there is a quick opportunity to fix it if we give three days for the investigation to occur.
And I, I think also, it, it makes me feel better in the fact that we had talked about the percentage of those landlords who want to comply and had the wool pulled over their eyes for two days, then they get the opportunity to clean it up. So I, I think that's fair on both ends.
And, my understanding was that there was a period of investigation, I had no idea that it was, it could happen next time.
Yes, so, yeah. Here's another piece that we're forgetting about here, these are people in these places. We revoke their license with three days' notice, that means no one can legally live in that house. So on Christmas Eve, you get a note, a report, and you issue a invest, a letter of investigation, and in three days, you're putting them out, or three days before Christmas, you're saying, we're revoking your license because you violated that law, where do those people go? How long do they have to get out?
We give sixty days, reduce occupancy.
We just said you weren't giving it any time, see, that's why.
No, 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 no.
No, she said sixty days.
It's sixty, it's been sixty days.
Sixty days for the tenant, or the tenant.
But the, but the license is suspended during that sixty days.
It's not, it's.
How can they be renting to people, collecting money for rent for two months without a license?
The order to reduce is always sixty days, at the time the, the revocation, suspension is renewed, is issued, it's, would be at the same time as the order to reduce, and that's always sixty days. We never give less time than that, unless it was imminent danger, and that would be immediate.
Right, but.
Oh, sixty days, sixty days to vacate, you're saying sixty days to vacate.
Yes, yes.
Now, they have up to fourteen days to make it right.
No.
Three to fourteen days.
It's not to make it right, it's contact, it's contact the city of Salisbury to discuss this matter.
It's wrong, it's wrong, you're done.
Okay, you contact the city of Salisbury, discuss the matter. When does the license renewal be suspended, when does the license resuspend?
At the time the or, the order to reduce is issued.
At the time it's issued, so, so at the time it's issued.
Even I'm sitting down here thinking that it's done the minute you write this first name.
All right, the minute, minute you write the person up, they, they, their renewal is, is, the license renewal is suspended.
It, it's almost like the order, the investigation of excessive occupancy should be done away with, because that's what's confusing everyone.
That's what I, what's confusing me.
That should just be done away with.
Mr. Heath?
It would, it would help all, I think would help all of us, certainly the more people talk, the more confused I get.
That's what I'm.
I would like to see the procedure in writing.
Yes, yes.
Exactly what, what happens, and if you get that to us before the, it comes out, it would certainly help me.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting, I was, I was all right, then I got, because see, well, I'm, I'm like Laura, if they, if, if they can't rent, and their license is renewed for this particular unit, that means those people aren't even supposed to be living there.
Right.
They're not supposed to be in there at all, because the license is, is that, is they live.
But see, we, uh, uh, we don't have the ability to suspend or revoke the license currently, that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is to give us that ability.
And if we do.
We can't, we can't do that right now.
And if we do, then they're out, they're living, they're either out on the street immediately, or within three days, or if there is a place that doesn't have a license.
That doesn't necessarily have to be the case, because you can say, okay, we, we've issued a, a letter of investigation, we've done our investigation, we've determined that the property is out of compliance, you get an order to reduce occupancy, which is sixty days, we give ample time for the person, persons to relocate. You can, during that period of time, go through the process of suspending the license, at, which would begin at the end of that sixty day period, and you're going to lose it for ninety more days.
You said immediately.
This is, it is.
You said immediately.
No, I, you all.
You just said, you said immediately, you said sixty days.
No, I'm saying, we're, we're, everybody's coming up with different scenarios here. I'm saying that we don't necessarily have to say, your license is suspended immediately, you get your citation for non-compliance, you're going to get your license suspended, your tenants have sixty days to relocate, I'm throwing this out as a, as an option in terms of how we, how we do this going forward. We're talking about it like we already have the ability to suspend a license on discovery of, of over occupancy, and we don't.
No, I was talking about it as if, if this were passed, because it was consensus, with the exception of me, that this go forward. So if that were passed, I was trying to understand the scenario, for me, it, it says, what we were discussing was sending out the letter, the notice of investigation, we inserted the three days, which wasn't originally there, but the next day, potentially, they could be found to be in violation, that revocation or suspension even would be issued. Then there's no rental license, yet we still have tenants in there, or people living in the house.
For sixty.
Without a license, for up to sixty days, or we're, we're putting them out on the street, those are the two options. We either put them out immediately, or we have people living in violation of our other laws, so that, that's what I. in violation of our other laws, so that, that's what I was trying to understand, which, which one are we gonna allow?
There's also a third option, that if the landlord or someone appeals to the board, if that occurs, then there is no suspension of the license, that goes on hold until the outcome of that hearing, so.
I think it would be beneficial if we tried to step back and write out the procedure so that-
Record the procedure out, because I'm sort of a few minutes-
Understand how you're going to-
I just, I just want to make sure that, that, and I'm not saying this to start any trouble at all, but we are not putting anybody out, the people who are living there, who are doing something illegal, or the people who own it, are making sure that those people are going out, so I just want to make sure that "we" doesn't include me.
That's what I'm saying, we've never put anybody out before, ever.
Let me throw one more thing into this, let's get the landlords, once they're found guilty of this, to write a letter to the neighbors, and say, sorry, I screwed up, this won't happen again.
You know you didn't screw up.
Get the landlords to write a letter to the neighbors who they've been inconveniencing for X number of months, years.
So we'll come back with a list of procedures?
All right, so, actually, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to get consensus to bring this back to work session. I'd like to see the accompanying policy, so let's call it, what we're going to do is, what council will be doing, we'll be looking at two items, we'll be looking at the ordinance, which doesn't need to change much at all, I don't think, based on what we've talked about here today, if at all, before we see it again, and the accompanying handbook or set of policies and procedures. And so there's two items. That second document, I'm not sure that needs council approval at all, but it's certainly something that's going to determine what we put into the ordinance, so that conversation, it's one conversation, but two documents, and only one of them we're voting on.
Right.
Okay, so two weeks, we'll come back, and what I really think I'm hearing is, is that we have got to get the question of, when if, of when, when it gets revoked, what happens?
How?
In the interim.
When? And what happens to the people for the sixty day period, or whatever period during which there is an order to vacate, and what happens to the license during that period as well? So if you're gonna have people in there, ensure that it's a licensed rental unit, and that the moment people leave, the license is pulled, so that has to be sorted out as well.
So they're in approbation.
So the how, the when, and the-
You good? Do you have any more questions, Susan?
No, I'm good, I have this more.
How, when, drawdown procedures.
Are you good with that, too?
I'm good with that.
Is there consensus for coming back in either two or four weeks, based on-
We're fine, I think if you lay it out.
You can email it to us.
We got it.
Yeah, I'll send it to Tom.
Okay.
Send it to Tom tomorrow.
Thanks, everybody, that was confusing, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
NSCC stuff is always confusing.
Yeah, 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 good, good call on that, Mr. Heath. Okay, that is all we have on our open meeting agenda this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Or, excuse me, I need a motion to enter closed session.
That was the one I meant.
That's the one I was looking for?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Shields, is there a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
With a five-minute break.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify your support of us, saying aye.
Aye.
Chair Vitsa. We will reconvene in five minutes.